Yeah.
I got six thirty one.
Beautiful.
Yep, two.
That's right.
And make sure this thing isn't gonna make a bunch of noise and um. Alright, hopefully that'll be quiet. There it goes. Phone system. Mine shall offer apparently no reason, okay.
She leaves it like it's a palm and leaves it, pushes it quickly through.
Yeah. Alright, here we go. I'd like to call to order the November eighth, two thousand eighteen, uh, meeting for the Holly Township Planning Commission to order at six thirty two P M. Uh, can we rise for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Tony Engelberg.
Here.
Lloyd Turner.
Here.
Glenn Mitchell.
Mostly here.
Pat Beany. Stacy Allred.
Here.
Stacey Stepley.
Here.
Um, I got a couple of messages from Pat. First, he said he wanted to be excused because he was not going to be here, but about a half an hour ago, he said he thinks he's going to get here, but he's gonna be running a bit late, so I think we'll wait to make any kind of motions on his behalf. If he doesn't make it, I'll make a motion to excuse him later.
Do we still wanna do Ted's?
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, so I do need a motion. Is that a motion, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Can I get support?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Glenn, support by E C to excuse Ted from the meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Um, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion on that?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Stacy, uh, support by Lloyd to approve the agenda. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Uh, public comment, um, uh, for items on the agenda only, which tonight is, uh, wind energy, blight, uh, ordinance regarding dumpsters and chickens. Um, so if we have anybody who would like to speak on those, uh, step up to the microphone and, uh, we'll allow you about three minutes. Tough crowd tonight, hearing none, we will move on. Uh, public hearings, we have none. Um, approval of the minutes from October second, two thousand eighteen.
I did have my notes that we were gonna have a public hearing on wind energy.
Yeah, we will, uh, I was gonna make a motion on that.
Okay.
Okay. At the record show, Pat got here at six thirty four.
Greetings, Pat.
We are in, um, agenda approval right now. So, the public hearing, the notice for it did not go out in time.
Okay.
So, when we get to that, I was going to make a motion that we postpone it, which we legally have to do, and then, um, update it to our December fourth meeting. So, that's why it's not.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion?
I have a correction, I'm assuming my, uh, mic was in bad shape last week. Uh, under, uh, reports, page two or three at the bottom, it should be, uh, I intended the, it's the, uh, on the road, two thousand eighteen M T A, as opposed to M P A, Michigan Township Association. Two thou- two thousand eighteen on the road regional meeting.
Okay.
With those changes, I vote we accept the minutes as presented?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Glenn, uh, support by Stacy to approve the minutes from October second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, communications, we got a letter, um, dated October nineteenth from Fenton Township's planner, uh, just updating us on the status of their master plan. Do anybody from the administration have any comment on that?
I read it a while ago, not enough to talk about it earlier. I remember voting it was consistent with high volume batteries.
Yeah.
So, it was nothing, you know, of concern, you know, township's pretty comparable to, to the Holly Township, so.
Alright, very good. Uh, moving on to old business, uh, number one, the wind energy ordinance. Um, I guess, just to get the house cleaning out of the way, I would like to make a motion that we postpone the scheduled public hearing from this meeting and reschedule it, uh, for December fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Support.
Okay, a motion by me, uh, support by Stacy to postpone and reschedule. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, so, let's get back to talking about the wind energy.
So, uh, I wanna let, last time we talked, there were some questions about, like, uh, wind maps. So, I provided you some wind maps that, um, show various different types of things, uh, wind at various turbine heights, uh, different locations. You know, w- when you look where Holly is, it's not necessarily the best area for wind, uh, which is again, is why you see them up north, uh, and along the shores, right? Um, but, at the same time, the reason why we're going through this whole, uh, process is to protect the township. You know, under the zoning, we're trying to protect the, the character of the township, and these have the ability to greatly disrupt, you know, the character of, they have the ability, doesn't necessarily mean they will, but they could. And so, we wanna make sure that any development comes in is done in a way that's agreeable to people of Holly. I also have, uh, some ma- a mapping here from D T E showing you the project they had going on for renewable energy. And then, I also provided a link to the D T E website, you know, there was a lot of good information on there, just general information about wind and solar and other renewable energies that they're participating in.
Questions, comments? Glenn, I'll start with you in the corner over here.
I overwhelmed us with maps. I guess I'm, you know, it's just one of those things you're to have, to have something on your books for it. I don't think that's gonna ever be too much of an issue here, so. Don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this, so. That's about all I have to say about it.
Okay. Stacy?
I would agree with my statement.
Lloyd?
Uh, I don't believe there's gonna be a huge development in this area. Um, we don't need to look at it too heavily. Are there any wind generating facilities in the township currently of any sort, even a residential?
I would say no, but possibly only a few, none that I know of outright.
Yeah, I can't think of any where I've traveled township where I've seen even a small one of residence.
It would have to be some sort of agricultural use. I don't, I don't know of any, uh, for personal, personal use.
I think that lends back to the fact that there's not much wind there.
But that consistent enough to be right is the other position.
I think we just need, like, once I get some on the books.
I was gonna say, there was enough wind Monday. There was enough wind Monday. Yeah, but not consistent.
Pat?
Will you tell everybody else on that?
Okay. E C?
Someone had a question about small, uh,
Well.
windmills. Has that been taken care of?
So, that's addressed in, in the ordinance, right? So, we're talking about, uh, the height restrictions that, that they do need, yeah.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I went and went out for a drive a few days ago and went, like I like to do sometimes, along some of our township roads and I don't see too many areas where it would even make any sense. The one obvious, and I think that's where we've had some interest in both wind and solar, was in the old golf course. Um, and who knows, I think as technology changes, we might see some small individual operations, but I, I, harkening back to a few weeks ago when I went across, uh, M forty six, which runs basically coast to coast midway through the state, through like Saginaw and Saint Louis and that area. There is about a twenty-five mile stretch there now where there, I mean, I, I don't think I'm exaggerating to say there's four hundred windmills within sight of the road, um, that weren't there two years ago. So, I don't know what the average speed to get one of those things up is, but whoever put the money, you know, whatever group put the money into doing that, it's, pretty impressive, and at the same time, it wa- it definitely did change the overall feel of that drive. Not saying negatively, but it definitely makes a difference. So, I'm glad we'll get this on the books. Um, I think, I think it makes sense. I'm interested to hear if we have anybody, when we do our public hearing, um, who's interested in doing wind, you know, come out and show up and talk to us about it, so. Uh, if there's nothing else, I don't, we don't have to act on anything else tonight. The motion we did earlier took care of that. Any further discussion?
Okay. Moving on to old business number two, blight ordinance dumpster. Uh, Mike, if you've got comments, and then I'll ask Amy also to step up and speak.
You know, I think we had some good discussion last time. I, I think there was a general consensus that the question was, why is this really necessary? And, you know, why are we gonna, do we really need to create an ordinance, you know, to allow this? So, one of the things you guys talked about was, um, having any here to, you know, in case you guys have any additional questions or share any comments, and then at some point provide an opportunity for, you know, the, those that do have one, you know, if they, you know, why? You know, that's essentially, why do we wanna do this?
Amy?
Um, I had, we had spoken earlier today regarding that, and I, I, I do agree that it's not something that we necessarily have to create an ordinance for or something that we have to allow. Um, we had talked when I was here the two months ago about different scenarios and different places, and then we get into the dumping and the, the enclosures and you start creating a lot of verbiage for, uh, a small amount of people compared to the, the mass. So, I thought, and I had spoken with Karen, and she agreed that just like we have in our outdoor storage of recreational vehicles ordinance, would be to add a line that if you were in need of a personal dumpster for even a short, you know, a short, short-term personal dumpster, that you would request permission from the zoning administrator. And that would be something that we would easily be able to police and enforce between the two of us administratively within the office. And I say that only because, uh, the one that I had went and enforced, um, about two years ago, was a gentleman that had, uh, major kidney surgery. His wife was disabled, so it was easier for him to go outside, take the trash right outside the door. They came once a month. He wasn't having to take it back and forth to the road. Um, and then, again, I think that would be something that if he had sent a formal request, or if, you know, upon my enforcement, had submitted a formal request to the zoning administrator, we would be able to know exactly how long it was going to be there, why, and then be able to keep that short-term time period.
So, currently, the zoning administrator is in the office?
Yes.
Because, because it's Karen. Um, if that was to change down the line, would that require additional?
We've always. We've always had a zoning administrator in the office.
Okay.
The pre- when the previous, uh, zoning administrator and building clerk, when that position was taken over by the clerk's office and distributed amongst Karen and her deputy, that's when it became the zoning administrator and her deputy became the building clerk.
Okay.
So, we had always had one in the office.
Okay, so that shouldn't be an issue that, in the future?
You know, from a policy standpoint, if for whatever reason the zoning administrator is separate from clerk again, and it becomes a part-time position, they can assign those duties to someone else.
Okay.
You know, so that someone by policy, you don't have to go and amend the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. I just would hate for if things changed and that now somebody has to go jump through a bunch of additional hoops to try to get the audience with the zoning administrator, but if that's not a concern, then I think it's a good idea.
E C?
I'm good.
Pat?
I'm good.
Glenn?
You skipped a little bit there.
Well, Stacy just said her piece.
I'm actually what a personal dumpster is, but I haven't had a personal dumpster before.
I know, I made Wong look into it.
So, basically, we just want a few letters, otherwise they're pretty much disallowed, then? Is that kinda what?
Hey, currently, right now, within our ordinance.
So, the ones that you have listed here basically would be potentially in violation of our current ordinance.
Correct.
And the ones here, as far as, and I did get a chance to go look, are the, do we know why they have them? Is it because of the amount, or is it because they only? I hadn't thought about, you know, is it because they pick up once a month instead of weekly or something? Is that?
Well, it was because of amount. One is due to home occupation, one is due to a hobby, uh, and then the, the other couple are, um, again, financial, and then the, we're g- at some point, we're gonna need to address commercial dumpsters.
Yeah.
We do have some areas, say, if you go even at Bulk Road and East Holly, you have, that Great Lakes Baptist Church has one. I did get them to actually move that from the roadside into their area, so it's not so blatantly right off the road. Um, and then.
Holly Academy has got a couple that just sit out and play and start.
I was gonna say, Holly Academy, Seven Lakes Party Store, that, uh, that area there, they have two, one on each side of the, the parking lot, and none of these have enclosures. So, I would say that at some point, I would like to see us create something as far as a commercial dumpster, and that might be in a different ordinance. I, I don't think that it necessarily lies within the blight ordinance, um, but as far as personal dumpsters go, uh, we do have one on Quick Road. I think, again, that is due to a home occupation, um, but there, we need, we need to either decide it yes or no, so then I can go ahead and enforce to.
And this wouldn't, it's not gonna create a hardship for any of these people you know of, as far as the ones you have.
Not, no, I, I, I don't really think so.
They could switch to either regular garbage collection or something like that.
Right. And then, again, they could ask for either a special use, a variance, or if it's a short-term due to illness or things like that, then they could request, if we were to add to the blight ordinance, just that line there that they could request a special approval from the zoning administrator for a short term.
You're not saying there's a fee for this, or would there be a fee for this?
Uh, as far as just the request from Karen for a short term, no, that would just be some, an administrative, you know, receipt of her request, and she would obviously pro- produce a letter saying yes or no. She didn't find to be an issue with that. I would say anybody, there's only one person that I think might take issue, and again, I would ask him to do a special use for a variance.
And those would actually, they would have to pay a fee for that, if they do that.
And I wouldn't wanna put an ordinance in place for a few. That's the other thing, too.
Cause it'll encourage more.
Because, right, and we also, but we also wanna protect the whole, not just, not just make them, you know, ordinance.
Would any of these be considered grandfathered in? Cause they not, because they were really not allowed to begin with, right?
They're not allowed to begin with.
Begin with, okay. Alright.
So, one of the things that was, uh, I believe was in our original report, was some standards for commercial dumpsters. We can pull that out and make a formal, you know, review for you guys.
I think that makes sense.
So, talking about grandfathered, is, you know, the existing dumpsters, dumpsters would be legal, not informal.
Right.
Um, when they would come in for whatever additional permits they may need, that would be a trigger for them to, you know, have to upgrade their dumpster, to have it enclosed, you know, proper screened.
And I didn't get a chance to see these, but I thought some of them, when you said they were close to the road, they were probably by the, by like other things that would be, you say they, yeah, um, that I think that's the route to go instead of really maybe making it a dumpster issue.
Yes.
So, where, I'm all in favor of putting this language in that you're talking about as far as, cause I can also see, like, we talked about earlier today, that, you know, heaven forbid somebody gets evicted. Rather than having them dump their stuff if they've gotta get out in a hurry in the street, um, that would be a great reason for them to want to get a dumpster. Um, where would we fit that lang- if we're not gonna do this long drawn-out ordinance, where would we fit that little, I mean, that sounds like it's two, two words or two sentences.
Well, usually, that usually, if, you know, an eviction and a dumpster, you know, say, like, my dad had just gotten one to clean out his barn. So, usually, that's only sitting for a few days.
Right.
That's not something that's like an ongoing for months and months.
They charge you by the day you're writing the time period, so you're normally gonna.
Right, yeah.
Now, my question is, where, if we're gonna put this language to do this administrative, where are we, where is it going?
The blight.
Um, I would have to say that it would be within the blight ordinance. We do address it, and I believe the second paragraph there is the list, and, uh, where we had discussed earlier about, um, having an active building permit. So, I would say at the end of that paragraph would probably be the best to add the verbiage about for personal use, uh, short-term personal use to request approval from the zoning administrator.
I'd like to see it separately than just part of one of these others, so it actually stands out by itself, but yes, that general area probably is where it would go.
And then, for a commercial dumpster, is that actually amendment to the zoning ordinance?
Right.
Cause that's, you know, letting use.
That's different.
Yeah.
So, do we, have you come back next month to us with a couple of lines, and then we'll, uh, we'll look it over and vote on it?
Well, uh, so, the blight ordinance is a general ordinance.
Yeah.
Right, so, that typically doesn't come in front of the planning commission.
That's true.
You know, as a current, uh, from a procedural standpoint, since you are involved with dumpsters in the whole, you know, having you look it over, but from, uh, procedural standpoint, it would be at the township board level.
Okay.
Um. We, we can have language for you to review for a commercial, you know.
Right.
Right. So, you'll add it to the blight ord- potentially add it to the blight ordinance and then present it to the board, the township board? Is that the way it would work?
Yeah, for the, for the.
Okay. For the personal, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, then we, at this point, unless I am hearing something I'm not hearing, uh, we will take no action on this and move forward.
Okay.
Very good. Moving on, old business number three, amendment to the animal ordinance, chickens. Um, one thing, as we talk about this, and something Amy and I talked about, we probably should stop just talking about chickens and start referring to it as class three animals, because rabbits and.
Rabbits and chickens.
Rab- yeah, I mean, so there are, there is more than one thing in play here, and unless we're gonna create a whole bunch of different languages for different animals, which I personally am not in favor of doing, um, what we do for one, we're pretty much gonna do for, for rabbits and chickens, they're gonna be together.
But rabbits don't crow.
That is true.
That's probably one of the biggest issues with the chicken.
Well, that is true. That is true.
Almost anything else in this, don't make the noise that roosters do.
Yeah, that is, that, that is true.
Probably a, a problem with the whole thing, uh, so, sorry, sorry to say.
No, you're right, that, that, I completely agree.
Chickens don't crow either, right?
They, oh, yeah, they do.
They don't.
They do.
They do make noise, but nothing, but nothing like the roosters now, yeah.
They do make noise. No, I've gotta come out and give my chickens, my hens, a dirty look every once in a while and tell them, throw some coin at them and tell them to pipe down. But it doesn't carry as far as many roosters do. So, Mike, what do you got for us?
Did you bring a chicken attorney with you?
So, you have updated email from, from Amy in here.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Um, you know, we had this session last time about what you wanted to see for chickens. I don't know if, I'm looking through the packet here, I don't think the language that we talked about is, is in here. Um, but, you know, we talked about removing some of the restrictions from the larger lot zoning districts, and then bringing in the smaller lot closer into compliant, or in, to comparison with what the village is doing. Um, I think you guys had some questions about, you know, what is currently out there and what complaints that you've been receiving.
Right.
Um, and maybe you can jump in.
Yeah. Jump in, alright.
Um, the majority of the complaints are noise and I'll, I'll touch on them. So, we have some in the smaller, more condensed areas that are half acre and one acre lots, say, around like the Quick Road area, that are more noise-based and then location-based. So, being the fact that they're such small lots and these chicken owners have their coops very close to the fence line. So, then, in certain months of the year, that becomes not only a noise issue, but an odor issue as well, because they're such a small area. Um, beyond that, there are other complaints of not having their chickens, because the, of course, you know, there's some other areas that have just pockets of close, small lots that have, um, they don't have an enclosure as proper as they should, or people allow them to roam. Even if they do have enclosure, they're allowed to roam, which then allows for, chickens are destructive by nature. They search for things to eat. So, you have neighbors that are upset with, um, chickens disturbing their mulch with pulling up their flowers, with, um, being in their yard, you know, I, not everybody is a fan, so you have chickens that are, uh, out in, on people's porches, they have small children, they're not, you know, there's, there's roosters going around, and roosters are not the nicest by nature. So, you have people that are fearing for their toddlers and children, and, um, then again, there's the, the crowing and whatnot throughout the, the day, in the morning and the evening. So, um, it's more noise, odor, and then roaming. So, in, in those smaller lots and those areas where people are more condensed, you're gonna find that, um, it's, you're gonna have a little contention there. Um, I know that, obviously, roosters, as far as the specific two complaints that I have, the, the not allowing roosters in those smaller lots would take care of the noise and the, the fear factor. Um, but we already have within our ordinance, the, the requirement for enclosure, not allowing them to roam, making sure there's, uh, adequate fencing and adequate shelter, making sure that they take care of the refuse properly, uh, and that is also within the right to farm. So, you know, where the ri- right to farm gives you the right to farm, it also wants you to farm properly. You know, there's the setbacks, there's the making sure that you're not just surrounded by non-farm entities. So, there, there are some things to think about as far as pros and cons of just not maybe blanketing or just mirroring the village be- because the village has it. You know, you could think of, and not so much of addressing it as a zoning, because even in the, in the A G R E, we have one acre A G R E lots. So, going by zoning, as, uh, Tony and I were kinda brainstorming today, might not be the best way to go about it, but sticking back again to the lot size. Um, whereas, we don't wanna become restrictive, like, for instance, say, due to slaughter, again, you know, you have ten acres, you can slaughter without really anybody knowing and do it, you know, humanely or whatnot, when, you know, despite the concerns, but, um, whereas you wouldn't want that on a half acre or an acre parcel in a more condensed area. So, a couple of things to think about. I did go to, uh, my Michigan Association of Code Enforcement Officers, they had, um, the attorney that represent, represents Orion Township, speaking about ordinances and things like that, and I did ask him about chickens specifically, and he was very, very adamant to tread lightly, and that it was a very, very large issue. It's a very popular issue right now. Um, and he did recommend that anything that we do put into our ordinance, that we should have vetted by our attorney. He thought it was very important that we had, um, the, our attorney's input on that, and that if we were going to be changing it, that she be involved in it, be, being that for some people, chickens are a very large issue, and, uh, people don't necessarily understand the right to farm. Um, that it not only protects the farmer, but it protects the animals as well. So, uh, that we're gonna want to have her take a look at it to make sure that it's something that we can properly enforce and does not go against what, what our goal is. Um, he was really emphatic that when we're creating ordinances, that we should have the opinion of the person that's gotta walk into court and defend it.
Like, so much so, perhaps that person should be here to advise on the discussion?
Well, no, not so much as just to make sure that when we're, um, passing things on, you know, once you guys make your decision, that we also include her into re- the review of that. Um, I know that the, it, that becomes, um, a financial, you know, for the township, it's not cheap to have an attorney here, and being that the meetings are long, it could be quite a bill for an opinion when we could do that through email or phone calls and whatnot.
E C?
Hi.
Pat?
You mentioned here the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development.
Mm-hmm.
What can they do to help us with this? Do they have any research?
Well, being that the right to farm allows the townships and the local municipalities to, to create. Well, being that the right to farm allows the townships and the local municipalities to create their own ordinances, um, they kind of feel it's up to us to feel, to figure out what is right for our community and what we think our citizens want to see. Um, I know that, again, just like the right to farm, they're an advocate for farming, but they're an advocate for proper farming and to make sure that, um, it works for the community and for the locations that you're trying to do it in.
Well, they have some thoughts on this, on this, they do.
Not really.
They, they wanna share them.
No.
They, they are.
Until we go to court and then they'll come out and say, oh, we could've told you this.
You know, for, uh, Department of the State, they're not very helpful for local communities. They all, they, they deal with this all over the state. This is not a unique situation to any one community, but they do not provide any recommendations or support, you know.
Or outlines or.
Anything, and it's leaving every community to recreate the wheel. And it's, it's not, you know, how you would think it should be settled.
Right.
Is there a way to look at the ordinances that are in place and appear to be working in comparable communities, maybe? Is there anything, is there anybody that's addressed this issue and has a little bit of time under their belt that maybe we can look at?
I've taken, I took a look today, I really dove into, um, Unicode and tried to find, and there's really not. I mean, we're one of the few communities that even address the different classes of animals. Um, the ones that, I mean, I, there's certain communities where I like their, their codes and the way that they're written, um, that we've, and you can even see that we've kind of went through and drawn from for, throughout the last few years, that don't even address them. They, they only address dogs and cats. Um, so it's kind of like they like lean to the right to farm. So especially in those more condensed communities, then you're gonna say, well, there's more than thirteen non-farm entities within an eighth of a mile, you're within two hundred and fifty feet of a non-farm dwelling. So you're gonna, you're gonna adhere to the setbacks and the rights and responsibilities of the right to farm act.
Yeah, so you know, zoning, right, they limit it to their agricultural zoning districts, that's where, you know, typically they're allowed. But I think that, you know, this, this is an issue that's affecting every community because, you know, chickens today aren't, you know, people treat them differently than, you know, you would before, we used to. And in the more suburban and urbanized areas, they're finally, well, what's the problem with having chickens?
Seemed like, and I might have figures wrong in the email, there was some more information that came along with that, that it said that either twenty percent of households either already have chickens or want to have chickens in the next few years. So it's a huge issue and they're not, see, they're not, to me, they're not really farm animals anymore when you have five or ten. They're really almost pets for them. And so you get to, oh, to me, we're mixing the two things kind of together. Um, and it's not just chickens, um, a lot of places, pigs, goats. Those are all kind of issues and they're things you can keep on relatively small parcels, but there's problems with all of them, especially if the neighbor doesn't like them for whatever reason. And you can always find a reason not to like something. Whether it's smell or looks or sound, it's, there's always something you can find you don't like about them. Um, so I don't know how we can win with this other than keeping it as basic as possible to not be too terribly restrictive in any way. Cause I think anything we're gonna be restrictive, that's when somebody's gonna take us to court and say, why five chickens, not ten? What is the difference, the noise, it's basically the same. Um, you know, the more restrictive you are, the more problem we're gonna have with, with forcing it or even making it.
Just to play devil's advocate, anything we do now for less than two point five acres is being less restrictive because right now the restriction is you can't have any.
Except if somebody challenged that, how would that hold out?
If.
And I have had that and I had to, and because, you know, and they wanted to claim right to farm, but you are in a condensed area and you have more than thirteen non-farm in the, you know, so people I don't, they don't really understand or know the right to farm until they're presented with the.
Not very eloquent of the right to farm, but.
Right.
Farmers in the state of Michigan basically is protecting people whose incomes depending on farming. And that's what they try and keep it pure for. They have sympathy for the people that want chickens or other animals, but it was never really intended for the small.
Right.
Yeah.
And so when you have somebody telling you can't do something, you, that's what they're grasping at. But farmers and even the state of Michigan, you know, the Department of Agriculture people are trying to keep that pure and they're suggesting people locally do what they want with other animals, but they don't want to jeopardize the thing that's protecting people's livelihoods basically by being used. Because it goes to court for some chicken in the backyard and they throw out the right to farm, it affects a lot of other people. So they really don't want you even using right to farm when you're dealing with the issues we're pretty much looking at here.
Right.
It is not, it doesn't mean it can't, and the farmers, I think, have simply for this, they want to see people have farm animals and get the feeling, cause most people are generations away from living on a farm or seeing farm animals. So they're very sympathetic, but they also don't wanna get drawn into these fights that people are having cause it's becoming very emotional for a lot of people.
Yes.
It's their pet, their chicken, their, their pig, and it's very emotional for those people.
And that's why the attorney said it's a very hot issue.
And some people have enough money that emotion can overrule sanity.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So it's gonna be difficult for us to get a middle road that everybody accepts, I think.
But I also.
I, I, I understand, you know, the noise issue.
But I also wanna remember too, that we're in a more rural community, we're not talk, we're not in West Bloom.
And, and people moving should realize that something's there.
Exactly.
So I was getting back to, you know, pretty much we decided, I don't think we can do it by zoning, cause that's not necessarily gonna.
Yeah, one more.
But by density, I think is what we're more or less talking about, but we need to have some kind of definition of what that is. And lot size, I guess is partly, but again, several of these animals like rabbits, you could probably have a thousand rabbits on a quarter acre and you wouldn't even know it if it was in their garage or something. Now chickens, they make a little more noise and stuff. So size and number isn't as much crucial probably as some of the other issues or number of animals. But geese, you know, we didn't talk about geese, but now I don't know, too many will keep them as pets, but they can be extremely aggressive and extremely noisy. So there's all these other things, once you start pulling this in, they can make more complicated.
And that's part of why I wanted to not just address it as chickens, but as class three animals. Because I, I have rabbit issues too. You know, I have a guy, I have a, I mean, as big, uh, there's a backyard about as big as two of these tables where it's just devoted to rabbits, and then there's a really nice home on the other side and the rabbits go through the fence and the dogs are eating the, you know, refuse and that's, that's a big deal, so.
How many of these complaints do you have in yours, Sam?
Uh, for chickens, I probably have five to six and, and the ones that are, they're very adamant about it. And when it's a noise issue, it's a, it's a big deal. You know, when, especially, you know, say you're a third shifter and you are only a hundred feet from, your bedroom is a hundred feet from the, from the coop. And you have a rooster that is an active rooster, some are more active than others.
Right.
So you have an active rooster waking you up at whatever time and you're a third shifter, you're very angry. Um, or people that have chickens and it's a great idea until you have to clean the coop. And so now your bedroom's a hundred feet from the coop and it's August and you want your window open, all you can smell is chickens. And it's very acidic, so it's a very pungent odor, um.
That's one word for it.
Yeah. But I've also had, like, like Glenn was saying, I've had, you know, goats, that's, that's been a, that's been an issue. Um, and then the rabbits, that's been an issue and that was, uh, my dog is eating the rabbit coop. I mean, that's a very big deal. So that, and that was, they were very adamant and stayed on it. And so it's, a lot of the noise and then of course, you know, the, the roaming is that, you know, they're destructive. So they're, they're, they're destroying everything that I just did, you know, and people, you know, I, I work hard and I come home and I put my mulch down, I come out, it's gone.
So it's a real issue, you have these problems.
I do, that, very active, I have, you know, the, taking pictures through, from their back window.
But they're all emotional too.
It's on my, it's on my deck and I wanna take my child out, but I'm scared, I'm not going to. It's August and I wanna go outside. So it, it becomes, that's where the problem's at.
So I think no matter what we do about this, I think unfortunately, roosters have to be, especially if they're small, roosters have to be separate, as a separate thing, because most of the rest, it's not a noise issue, but with roosters it is.
Yes.
In a, in a closed in area. The rest of things kind of work out, I think, as far for di- you know, yes? You seem to quite think of it, but roosters are different in this whole thing, or, or the noise makers. And there's no way to completely stop them, if you have a rooster, they're gonna make noise. It's night or day, so it doesn't matter when you're third shift or not, because if, if one crows and the other crows or if there's a lot of noise, they crow to respond, so it could happen anytime during that day. So it is annoying to people, um.
So from a consensus standpoint, right, right now, they're not allowed on less than two and a half acres. Do we have consensus that it should be allowed on less than two and a half acres?
Yeah.
It's class three.
Should not be allowed?
Oh, they shouldn't, cause currently they're not.
You're talking about roosters?
The whole close.
Oh, okay, I thought you said roosters.
No, class three.
Okay, yes.
So right now, they're not allowed on less than two and a half acres.
Right.
Is there consensus that they should be allowed on, with some, at some number, but under two and a half acres? If that makes sense what I'm trying to say?
I'm yes.
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 Amy?
No.
You don't think, speak.
No, I don't think it should be.
Okay.
You don't think chicken are class three?
Underputting that class three, right.
Could you elaborate?
No, we're just, uh, trying to, trying to number it. The small amount of space it can get out of hand, uh, with your classroom being around this area, I think.
Two and a half acres is a fairly decent sized space though.
Yeah. That's just my opinion. I'm not gonna bite into it.
Well, any size property, doesn't matter, depending on where you locate your building. If you lo- locate your house within just ten feet setback on the side, then your neighbor does the same when they have chickens. Doesn't gonna matter how big your property is, you're still gonna be.
Um, that's an interesting way to handle it, you know, by, not even address it by acres, but by setback. You know, setback from existing structures.
Yeah.
Cause that would basically eliminate very small lots to begin with.
Yeah, Amy, I talked about it a little.
So what information do you think would help you, you know, make an informed decision? Uh, that's sort of where, where I was trying to get with this, right? Cause if we're gonna say, all right, let's forget about this two and a half acres, right? You know, we can prepare a map that shows, you know, different categories of, you know, map, or parcel size, if, if that helps so you can get a better understanding of, well, how much of the township is under an acre, how much is between an acre and two and a half acres.
Again, we're coming back to, you have parcels that are small within the village that are allowing this. And then we're not going to allow it or, or have a limited number on two and a half acres that, in my head, that just does not make sense.
There's a limit in the village.
I, I, and I do, and I'm not saying no limit, I'm just saying that to have, it's kind of like even me, like I live in, I live in Riverside, right? So I'm a little removed from the village, I'm not completely removed, I still, like, you know, I'm still pretty close, but I'm more, I have less density in my subdivision than they have in, in the core of the village.
Sure.
Housing and it's allowed, you're allowed to have what, six?
Six, six.
So to me, it's just, to allow, li- certainly less than that, I don't think it makes sense in this type of community. So.
Is there a different way to look at it? Instead of trying to regulate how many animals, is looking at it from a noise perspective and just putting it in noise ordinance? Where basically it could be roosters, it could be something else and saying if the noise is over so much.
You'd have to do noise, odor.
Something like that, you know, animal care, there's a whole bunch of things for animal care. If you're not taking care of your animals, somebody's gonna turn you in, you're gonna be in trouble over that.
Yeah, I mean, for.
So, so when we start designing some of this stuff, I think it's unnecessary, cause there's other things that, that can cover that. If people aren't taking care of their dog or chickens, there are other things out there that they're gonna be in major trouble with, so.
Don't we have a nine?
But I just wonder if there's a different way to look at it, because this is gonna be very difficult when we try to get to numbers and size and setbacks, all those things all have, you know. Yeah, class three animals, there's a whole bunch of different things in class three animals too, so. What works for one, doesn't even make sense perhaps for another.
So, I'm sorry to cut you off, but, so, do you think that just removing the minimum entirely would be the easier fix? You'd still have to adhere to your setbacks, you'd still have to adhere to enclosure, proper shelter, proper care of refuse. And then the noise and the odor would fall under your current nuisance ordinance?
That would make a lot simpler.
I like, I like that a lot.
Can you just explain, if you ask, you know, roosters are not gonna, you're gonna have a nuisance complaint and you just not can't have them because of that issue?
Well, and then if they did, but the other side of it too, is that if, you know, at that point, if you have the problem, now we're attacking that individual problem and we're not doing that blanket for everybody.
Right, and then I can see, I can then, then you would enforce upon setback and nuisance instead of lot size.
I, I would be more comfortable with that.
And we could always really look at it later too.
And then that's not an issue as far as numbers or restricting, uh, the.
Cause we're gonna have a heck of a time when we hit to numbers, so, things, it's not gonna, and it's not a one size fit all for everything class three.
Well, and that's the other part of it too, is, you know, I didn't think about the fact, you know, about, you know, geese, duck, you know.
Turkeys are a whole different, chickens aside.
Yeah, a whole nother, a, a whole nother thing, now we're talking about rabbits. Now it's like, oh, well, we're gonna allow six rabbits? I mean, to, I don't want more than six rabbits, but that doesn't mean somebody else doesn't want more than six rabbits.
But a four H, you know, a four Her might.
Might, might indeed want that, so.
But who's going to, who's going to police inhumane treatment? Who's gonna police if somebody decides to shove a hundred chickens into a bar and then?
That would be animal control. And that's still, yeah, they are, there's, yeah, there's still.
And they're pretty effective at doing that, and there's a lot of public pressure too. I think that's probably the least of our worries, that we don't need to be in there regulating that, there's other people out there doing that.
No, yeah, and I actively, you know, there's people that call and I give them animal control.
And if you see it, you're gonna, you're gonna call animal control if you see a problem too, so.
I can't imagine a, a single family owner having more chickens under than, a density greater than what you see at, you know, a chicken farm.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, the number has never been a complaint, it's the noise, the odor, and the roaming. So when you're, within the class three, you already have all of those requirements for, again, shelter, enclosure, refuse, so.
And if the township wanna be proactive, they could have like a seminar and say, these, this is the things you need to do to be able to feed chickens and, and say this.
You're absolutely right, yeah.
And to be more proactive, instead of going and say, you just can't do this, that's what I would actually rather see.
Yeah, they just had a Nordenville, like a month or two ago, at the public library there, that they, they put on.
Saying, you know, you can have these kind of things, but you do have these criteria you're gonna have to meet to, to make it work.
What a great idea for a library.
Yeah.
I was gonna say Glenn is our resident, um, library board member and farmer.
She doesn't say AC too.
AC's on there too.
Yeah. Yes, but you're the farmer. Farmer Glenn's Chicken School.
Gets back to what I've been saying, you know, about all the ordinances, right? We're trying to protect the character of the township. And this isn't, this is consistent with the character of the township's ordinance, is inconsistent in this situation, or the character of the, of the, of the township.
Yeah, yes, definitely. Cause it's not allowing.
Right, so, you know, it's, this is a situation where you need to amend the ordinance, you know, in a way that's consistent with the character.
I think the two point five and above is fine the way it is. Amy, do you, is there anything we need to change with that?
No, I think that the, I, I think if you were to remove the lot size requirement, it might, that might be the simplest and easiest.
Look, cause you're still gonna have a hundred foot setback from another dwelling. Right, so if on your smaller lots, that's gonna prevent you from having on a quarter acre lot.
Or putting your coop in the proper area.
Right.
So you're saying we're gonna, you wanna get rid of the two point five acre line completely and just.
Yes.
And adhere to all the rest. And then I can enforce upon noise or nuisance.
Yeah.
And nuisance, smell?
Nuisance is the best, odor is part of the nuisance, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Would it fall under all of that? Okay.
So chaos arises somewhere down the line.
We could always change it.
When you get into, changing things or restrictions.
Yeah, we revisit it.
Right.
I like it.
With the open, open situations you have right now, what size are those lots that you're getting complaints from?
Um, there, I have a point eight, I have a one point three, a two point zero three. I mean, you have some that are just, just almost there, two point three. You know, ones that you honestly, when you look at the character of the lot, there's no reason. Some have, you know, adequate fencing that it shouldn't be an issue. Um, even this, in the denser areas, you know, I enforced, and because we were kind of in limbo with this, they just went ahead and got rid of their rooster and everybody was happy. So we took care of the noise issue and there, there hasn't been an issue since.
So what are we gonna do with the roosters?
So maybe we say, uh, well, again, the rest, yeah.
Noise.
But I just.
I was gonna, I was gonna recommend on, not allowed on two and a half acres or, you know, less, but you can hear them, right? So it doesn't matter how big your lot is.
You have a hundred acres and still be annoyed your neighbor.
That one, it's also, and, but it's also, if you end up where you have a rooster that's not making noise, that opens. I mean, it's gonna make noise, but I mean, if it's not nuisance. Yeah, but I mean, because, because it also leaves it open for people, if you have two neighbors that, if it doesn't bother them, then it allows them to be able to enjoy their residence as well.
So say, I'm, I'm sure there's somebody, there's some that like it and enjoy it, it's a reminder that they live in a rural community.
And some move to Holly because of that reason, not necessarily to hear roosters, but because they want it rural and they wanna be able to have animals where they couldn't have.
Yeah. So I think instead of trying to recreate. So, I think instead of trying to recreate the wheel, we could just remove a spoke.
Yep.
I like it.
Yep, I love it.
Well done.
I'll tell you what, I'm stupid.
So, how do we go about just?
Yeah, how do we do that?
Start a public hearing, cross it out.
All right.
We're crossing out the two and a half acres and we're going to make the rooster issue just a noise issue. So, basically not with the rooster.
There's already.
All right, what?
I don't think Tony's happy.
I was gonna say, I mean, let's go.
I, I, I think, I think not all, or, um, not having the rooster language in there is just, I think it's inviting trouble.
Why?
Because I think, I think you're gonna get people who are going to try and have them, thinking that it's not gonna create a problem. And then retroactively, Amy's gonna have to go and deal with angry people.
Well, then, well, I mean.
Basically, how to deal with angry people if it's involving a dog?
Yeah.
I mean, that's huge, I'd miss a person.
I have those too.
Dog barking is not.
And sometimes people need to get rid of a dog because they can't control the bark.
Well, how about this?
But a dog, a dog barking, there's, there's solutions for that, that don't involve getting rid of the dog. Bring the dog inside, there's things you can do, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe in muzzles, but you, in theory, you could put a muzzle on a dog, I think.
I don't know enough about roosters, I don't know if there's anything you really do.
Sound cage, the sound of the.
There's never gonna be a perfect solution. And I think the best thing is to, you know, okay, it's gonna be a sound issue, it's gonna be a, a noise problem. And then that's when someone's just gotta realize, you're not a hundred miles from everything. You're in a rural area, but you're not devoid of neighbors, I mean, you know, but. I think, to be honest with you, I think regardless of what you're gonna do, you're always gonna have someone pushing the apple. You know, you could have the most restrictive things and you're probably still gonna run across people that could a lot have a rooster. And the fact of the matter is, that's on them, that they really want it bad enough, I guess, to take it to whatever steps to keep it. I just don't think you're gonna find that many people.
What if the township created like a, a one page flyer, someone calls in and says, well, what can I do about chickens?
No, that would be.
Oh, that would be great, put it on the website.
That would be.
Here's what the ordinance says, and here's a note, you know, you're allowed to have roosters however.
Warning. Warning.
Well, and we have our tax bills, our winter tax bills are about to go out, I'm creating the, the newsletter for the winter tax bills. We can totally put this into, this information into the winter tax bills.
Well, and also just make it available on the website as well.
Facebook and all of the other ways that they reach out.
And then just everywhere. And get the information out.
And I, I think that Glenn had a great idea for public education.
I might.
It might prevent a lot of other problems, so.
Well, and if you're gonna do that, video it and then that can be a.
We have PEG fund money that needs to be spent.
I think with the roosters, it's, try it this way, if you encounter a lot, bring it back, come to us and tell us and then we can look at it.
Yeah, because the issue, the issue with roosters is if you end up with one, and I did accidentally, it is a hard. For somebody like me who, who they are more pets than, than things, finding a place to take a rooster that it's not going to become somebody's dinner or in other way disposed of is not easy.
Well, I mean, you're gonna, you'll run into that problem either way.
And so. Well, you're gonna run into it accidentally, yes, as far as somebody who, again, intentions aside, thinks that they can have them and they're not gonna be a problem. They get two or three or four of them, suddenly it is a problem, now we've gotta find a place to take these four animals.
No, they have to find a place to take those four animals.
Well, okay, they do, but what's going, in the meantime, they're.
Or find another solution, cause it's not limiting.
But they didn't educate, but they didn't educate themselves.
Well, I under, I understand that, but they, we're also, by not putting the language in the ordinance, we're telling them it's okay.
No.
So, where language isn't in the ordinance?
Now, I think what would be great is to get a public hearing, because I like to ask people that are really into chickens, how many of them would really want a rooster?
Yeah.
That's my, that's my question is, I don't know enough about that, but would that really be something that someone would really want?
If, if they're going to be.
Your, our local chicken representative, what, would you want a rooster? Or would you want it if you accidentally ran into?
Technically, technically, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, technically, she can't speak right now.
Oh.
Yeah.
First of all, you do have the ability to.
That's fine.
No.
Open for discussion.
Yeah, well, I know, but.
So, when you get the rooster issue, where, where is the point? Because a chicken this big.
Right.
Is fine as a rooster, it's not till.
Well, and that's what happened, that's what happened with mine.
And so, you would have to go by age too to.
That's what happened, that's what happened with mine.
Because if you had a hen that had chicks, half of those are probably gonna be roosters, you don't know that necessarily when they're hatched. Unless you're a professional chicken sexer, and then you might be able to tell, otherwise you have no clue probably.
Right, and that's, that's what happened with mine, I got baby chicks and they were supposed to be hens.
Yep.
Um.
So, even with the best, even when you think you've got hens, you don't necessarily have to all have them.
Right. Right. Now, Melinda, put, go ahead, but step up to, step up to the microphone, please.
So, I was thinking earlier in.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. You're okay, it just, that way everybody can hear you on the camera and everything else.
Okay, so I don't know anyone who intentionally goes to buy roosters. Now, I've picked up my, uh, chickens, same thing, I've accidentally ended up with roosters. They can't guarantee that the pullets are one hundred percent, their guarantee is ninety, but last year I ended up with two roosters from one set, so that percentage was not anywhere near ninety percent, I had a hundred percent rooster, not ninety percent hen. Didn't find out until about six months, now this was a specific breed. So, my dog's single bark that he manages to do was just so much louder than what these little roosters could do. So, it's gonna be a breed by breed, how aggressive they are and how much noise they actually make. So, and again, I think their question was, how many people will actually go out and intentionally want roosters? That's gonna be a breeder, someone who wants more, and I don't know anyone in, in my circle who is doing that. The, the roosters serve a purpose, they do protect the hens, both of mine were killed by predators while protecting my hens. So, I ended up keeping all of my hens, but I did lose both of my roosters. So, and I knew I, what you had said about as far as rehoming roosters is very difficult. My sister ended up with one through the same situation, she was supposed to have six hens, ended up with one rooster. And he ended up being a very aggressive bird and no one would take him. All of the places where you're supposed to just call and rehome, it's, they're full, because there are so many people with backyard chickens now. And so many ordinances, specifically against roosters, it's getting harder to rehome the roosters.
So, I think it's actually, it might be better on a different spin of what you're concerned about is if we don't address roosters.
Right, because we're almost making the people in trouble to begin with by not, I mean, they have it done on their own, it just happens, the circumstances, um, so.
Having one accidentally.
But if we do education warning, roosters are probably gonna be a problem and may violate their nuisance ordinance.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, under those circumstances, you would've been in violation of anything, or without any real.
And you won't know until five months down the road that you're in violation and then it's a panic, you know, I just was praying that my neighbors didn't complain.
Right.
No.
Right.
I just was praying that my neighbors didn't complain, and luckily, you know, my neighbor next door, he loves the birds, he was so excited about it. So, um, but I wasn't, because I didn't know what I was getting into when they turned out to be roosters. So, I had all the same fears that, that had been addressed, but again, I think AJ said at the last meeting that the natural order of things, there's gonna be fifty percent hens, fifty percent roosters in every hatching, there's no way to control that. But most of the roosters at the big factory farms are ground up and they're disposed of, there's no real purpose for them except to create more birds.
And here's something to think about too, if we did put something in an ordinance that rid of, uh, roosters and people end up with situations like this, I think we might find ourselves being challenged on a lot quicker. Because someone's gonna say, well, all of a sudden I got these roosters, what am I gonna do? They're not gonna get rid of them, but they say, I can't have them, so I gotta make a challenge on that. I mean, I, once again, I don't think it's gonna be a ton of people, but all you need is one to drag you into court or something like that.
And we're only do, we're only kind of speculating on a what if.
Right.
There's only been a few really for noise, it's more of they're right on the fence and, you know, or, or they're roaming.
Well, keep in mind, we're now going to allow chickens into a whole new realm of the township that they haven't been allowed before.
How many people didn't know we didn't allow them though before?
A hundred percent, one hundred percent of the.
Yeah. So, to me, we're not changing anything for most of those people.
We're probably got a few of them that are gonna be saying, I've been doing that too, thank you for making.
There are, there are.
And to be honest, until we got discussing this, I wasn't even really, overly sure, even after your exploits with the chicken ordinance in the village, how many chickens you could have, so I was like, oh, yeah, that's right, I do remember telling you that, but there are a lot of people that just kind of, that's right, let's talk about it, they did.
Right. Only other concern I've got, and I, I guess I'm, I'm willing to relent and, and see what happens, cause like, you know, it was said, if Amy gets flooded with rooster complaints, we can always come back and address it. Um, although just procedurally, if we change it down the road to no roosters and people have them, are they going to be forced to get rid of them or are they grandfathered in as well?
I, I wouldn't know until somebody complained.
Yeah, that's true. So, the, then the only other question that we, I do wanna talk about is the language about slaughtering of animals, I, in a bigger lots, I don't think it matters. I, in.
It's not, I, I would say it's not something that you address anyhow in class three. I, I, I would say that I wouldn't wanna put the cart before the horse until you had to. You know, I, I understand the pension to want to, but again, you're in a rural community and these are law, these are essentially laws, so I would not really want to put a law into place until you needed to.
And you haven't had any?
I have not had any complaint of anybody slaughtering, and usually, I'm, I can't say for sure, but usually a backyard chicken operation is not for meat hens.
Not any complaints on slaughtering. Right, no, that's true.
So, if someone is gonna complain about slaughtering, what are their complaints gonna be?
That they're slaughtering.
It's merely that slaughter law, I mean, that's not a nuisance of a sort.
And they might just be against that completely and it doesn't matter, that would be the main thing.
And, uh, knowing from personal experience, if you do have like meat chickens and that, there are many places in the area that are, so, man, it's relatively inexpensive, speaking of, so.
You can take them to do that. Usually, you're gonna have to be one of the more hardcore.
Right.
To start doing that.
I guess what my question was leading to, again, gets back to your nuisance ordinance, you know, what is the issue with slaughtering? Is it because it attracts, it creates, creates a nuisance of some sort?
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're out with your child in the front yard and you look over in your neighbor's garage and they're beheading chickens, that's something.
And that would, and that would be part of the nuisance ordinance, because you are inhibiting someone from enjoying their parcel.
I sense that.
If you read the, if you read the way that the nuisance ordinance is, or disturbing the peace ordinance we have both, uh, reads, it's, you know, any, any activity that inhibits someone from enjoying their, their lot.
So, and I would say, how is that any different than somebody slaughtering a deer?
Yeah, who's this gonna say?
Because my, I ran into that exact situation with my child being from Florida. We went over to a friend's house, we're here, yay, everything's great, come around back, that's where I'm at, walk around the corner and there's deer. And half the skin's off and she's crying, and so, yes, I can understand it, but it's not any different than a deer or any other animal that would be going through that.
So, would you enforce on that if somebody called and complained?
What's that?
Deer.
You know, deer means.
And it was, if it, yeah, I, I mean, it would, you would have to, you're gonna have to do some screening and maybe choose a different location.
Okay.
But I have not.
Okay. Any other discussion? Um, then, all right, can I get a motion to set a public hearing for next month on chickens?
Hi.
So, who?
Support.
Chickens are class three.
Class three, I gotta, I meant to scratch that off myself.
Yeah, that's right.
So, a motion by Glenn, support by Stacy, to set a public hearing for the, uh, class three animal ordinance amendments. All those in favor?
I am.
We don't have to say what those changes are, sorry.
What's that?
We don't have to say what those changes are.
No, not in the motion for the public hearing.
Okay.
No. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
And just so we have consensus, we're removing the, the acreage.
Yep, class size requirements.
Right. All right, moving on to new business, we have none, reports, I'll start with AC.
Uh, just two things, I got a question, I was reading, uh, the news, uh, was it tri county? And maybe you're the only one that has some information on this, what's going on with this industrial development project? Some kind of public hearings coming up with the announcement.
On the twenty first, they're, uh, are looking at creating an industrial, uh, park area over near the Shannon development. Um, AC had brought up the point, and actually a couple of the people had brought up the point, that they thought this should have been brought in from the planning commission, um.
Or at least, at least we'd be aware.
Right, be aware of it, and, and it wasn't, and when I asked at the, uh, last meeting on that, it was felt that because it involved, uh, part of the.
I F T.
I F T, yeah, that it was not something that should, uh, for, in other words, money was involved, there's hospital, the tax breaks on this and that was the reason why I would've brought it from the planning commission.
So, any site improvements are still gonna come in front of the budget, this is just a classification for the property?
Right, right. Right, just they, just the property in the area.
The state of Michigan has like this classification for industrial park, or they do.
Correct.
Tax benefits and other.
Right, and, and that's the other thing too, this is like, uh, you could look at it from the first step of, uh, this district's formed, and then people who would participate in this could come forward later on to look for a tax abatement.
Right.
That would be, so that's where, you know, the money issue and that comes into when you're discussing, you know, whether, but, you know, anything involving development, obviously would have to come in front of the planning commission, and I think, perhaps.
So, it's just the initial stage?
Right, right.
You don't have, don't have everything picked out and?
No, no, matter of fact, uh, it's, it's more or less empty land at the moment, and, uh, Shannon would obviously be the first, uh, one of them. And as you can imagine, they're very proud to come in front of the, uh, um, board for a tax abatement. So, that's, you know, but this is the first step in that line, so. Doesn't mean necessarily anybody's getting tax abatements, but it has to be done before we could consider giving tax abatements, so. And this all started, this basically all started to, is because Shannon, uh, came to a conclusion that they couldn't, uh, do wells on their property to expand, so now they're going to get water from Grand Lake, Genesee County, and the whole district has been formed there, come together. So, that's, you know, kinda got the ball rolling, as you can imagine, their, their philosophy is, we're spending money, we didn't plan on it, so they're looking for a bit of a tax break, so that's gonna be, you know, the discussion, so, if not at the next meeting, the following meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that all sounds like a very positive development, you know, when neighbors like came in, you know, we suggested, you know, talk to the Grand Blank about sending water.
Right.
So, the fact that it's actually happening is good for the economy.
You're right, and, you know, yeah, that's the way I look at it too, is, you know, that it's something that now, and it, you know, protects other water resources of ours out there, but, well, you know. Um, to me, it's kind of them coming to a realization, I, you know, not being an expert on this, but it never made any sense to me that you're gonna build a large complex, uh, depending on wells.
And septic, yeah, no.
And that just always seemed a little off, so, so this actually will make it more a viable campus for them, I believe, in the long run.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna be limited to, you know, what, or just bits of, you know, warehouses, make connections, move things on the site, which is better for, for the township.
Right. Right. And, and my understanding is, you know, the, I think it's like a hundred and six acres altogether, and it's, because we haven't even heard from anybody else, so really this district is hopefully, might attract some people, but, uh, it's been kind of identified by the board as being, and if you look at it, and, uh, very more or less industrial, you know, along Dixie Highway, there's nothing too controversial about the property in that.
Is this the property they've already cleared, north, or some, sorry, south of the?
It's all of it, including.
Yeah, it's all south, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't.
Yep.
That's original.
Yeah, it was asked and I really didn't get an answer, I don't think it was, uh, passes it like no answer that they would've possibly buy more land. But right now, that they were speaking of any, uh, immediate developments on what they already had, so.
AC, did you have another? Thought you said a couple of things, that was the first one.
Uh, the other was just an announcement about an event that we.
No, no, this is, this is.
Tomorrow, Pontiac, our neighbor to the south, uh, they're having a bicentennial celebration, uh, in the city of Pontiac. And the Pontiac Arts Commission is having a celebratory event Friday from six to eight P M downtown at the, uh, Pontiac Creative Arts Center, so they're all invited, pass the word, uh.
Like the camera.
That's it, then.
All right, Pat?
Uh, I think it's pretty much done with the board.
What? What?
Well, we did get the solar park, it's, according to the Flint Journal, it's Hazelton Venice Townships in Chawassee County, they're putting in this big. Um, so that was, you know, and they did come to our farm and actually asked.
So that was, you know, and they did come to our farm and actually asked some about it, we never responded, because we weren't interested at all, but. Anyway, so it's coming, I'm not sure, that's wonderful in some ways, I don't find solar, um, not appealing, but it takes a lot of farmland that's probably never gonna be used for farmland again, basically, when it's used for that. I think there's a lot of questions about who's gonna maintain it and all that stuff afterwards, but anyway, it didn't happen to us, but it did happen not too far away from us. And I have to say, um, years and years ago, I went to a big chicken farm, which wouldn't be big nowadays, where they had commercial layers, and they had roosters. And the question was, why did they have roosters, and of course, you think all kinds of different possibilities, it moved the dust around inside. The, the roosters ever, actually ran it around the top of the cages and kept the dust moving supposedly, so the exhaust fans took it out. So that was the reason they had roosters. Yeah, the roosters always.
That's the answer to my biggest problem.
See, they roosters move your dust.
I didn't know that.
Catch little swiffers to their. Stacy?
Uh, this Friday ladies night out. Come on out ladies, but besides that, nothing else.
Thought I had something and it slipped my mind.
Recreational marijuana?
Or is that the reason it slipped his mind?
No, no, no. That is a discussion for a later date.
Ah, indeed.
Is that how we're gonna complete our year, after all these other things?
No, I'm.
I'm trying to figure out a question, maybe chicken and owl family?
No, 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 I, I mean, uh, the, the only difference to me between this and last time is last time we had to, um, we had to opt in, and we, um, in order to move forward, and we chose not to. This time, if we decide we still don't want it, we have to opt out. So, um.
Governmental, uh, which, right, we have to turn around and say no, so, yes.
My personal feelings on it is that nothing, for me, nothing has changed as far as my reasons for not wanting it here a year ago. But will, uh, that'll be a discussion for probably a couple of months from now, um.
Another time.
Other than that, no, I think, I'm personally glad to see election season is over, um, hopefully.
Fingers getting tired from all that hype?
No, no, hopefully, uh, Amy won't have to, uh, deal with too many signs that have been left out for months at a time.
They were lucky I was on vacation.
No, and I think, I think that's about it, um.
It's a record.
Should we even mention, i- is there anything on the mobile home, or the manufacturer home? Is it, do we know why they're holding out, not bringing it in, or, if, nothing has been even discussed for three months, about three months?
Nothing official.
I'm assuming it's probably still revolving around the fire authority. You know, I think because they're probably going to really stick to them about the deaths that they had in the water company, so. That's probably what's hanging it up right now.
Actually, I did have a question, just going into the discussion about Shannon, if they're going to go to, um, city water. Now, they had planned an area for a septic field, I'm assuming, I don't have the plans in front of me. Um, what can they do with that, cause obviously it's been used as a septic field since they've been open. What, what can they do with that, that land?
Uh, they're gonna, my understanding was water, rain and sewer.
Water and sewer, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, but, I, it's, so, so, you just see a septic field, what can they?
There's a period of ti- isn't there a period of time for?
Plan some water like courses on it.
Yeah, you have to wait.
Yeah, I don't know if, they.
Something like.
I don't think the location though was in a location where it would make sense to go.
It was almost.
Yeah, it, yeah, it was not, it was not an optimal si- situation. But it's, it was more in a setback, w- you know, it's, just not like a bu- uh, maybe if they were to expand or something, but, I, that.
My issues is, would they have to be hooking on to that, or would it just be future developments that they're looking for? Cause sometimes your, your grandfather, you know, if you already have.
It seemed to be, uh, one question that was raised about the, uh, you know, we were talking about at, like, um, at the board meeting, and that was the other development of the, uh, the park, which they, they would be tied into that because it was discussion, what, I don't know, that would be our cost, and what that would be the cost of, you know, person coming in and that. And, uh, so that, I think, the idea is that that whole park would be on the block, the same water system.
Right.
And Grand Blank and Genesee County were kinda more or less saying that would make it more, you know, better for us, the more we can get on there, so. I didn't personally, I don't think anybody else had on the board any problems with, don't think as many people as I could get on it, you know, but it would be at their cost.
Sure.
Hook up with it, so it would be, would be a township project to, uh, be involved in that.
So, this is why we have a board member on the panel. Thank you, sir.
All right.
So, next meeting, we have two public hearings, well, with energy, we'll have the class three animals. And then we'll also have the draft annual report for you guys to review. Uh, last year, we did the annual report, we did it, you know, there's a discussion if you guys wanted to do it, so we'll put together the bones, we'll give you some ideas, and then you guys have a discussion about projects you wanna consider for, for next year.
I think we did them all this year.
Well, you know, something to consider, start considering is Dixie Road, you know, giving some resources along Dixie Road.
Heritage corridor.
Yeah, you know, so we talked about that, the RV, um, just, you know, uh, or RV park, right? Be prepared for that, um, and for Shannon, right, you know, that's still I one, or L one. Right, you have live industrial and general industrial, you don't have anywhere actually zone general industrial right now. And we were saying, you know, that property should be general industrial, if they're going through this, let's do that.
Time to change the zone, right?
Yep.
So, you know, little things like that.
Dixie Highway.
Yeah.
Dixie Highway, next year.
And I think, if I remember right, we do elections next month, or do we wait till January? Cause I know, started in Jan.
January, we have to.
We said we were done with elections.
Well, I thought, I thought, I thought we have them in the December meeting and then start in January, cause my first.
I think that is how you guys are doing, it's not necessarily how all, all communities.
Most do it in January and then start in February, okay.
No, no, they do it at the meeting.
And then just switch.
At the January meeting.
Okay.
Cause we have to get a new member in next month, and either.
Yeah, I wouldn't be anybody on this board, I wasn't on the board till January, so the fact that I'm.
That's right, okay, so we did it in January, okay.
Done elections in January. Yeah.
Welcome to the team.
All right.
Tony, what are we gonna do with Ted?
Ted's, Ted's, um, term is expiring, so, um, supervisor calls, we'll appoint somebody, well, with the board, appoint somebody now.
I think as a planning commission, we should do a certificate or something.
There's actually, there, I actually had a conversation with George today, and there are plans and works for, um, a, not a ceremony, but definitely an honoring and thank you for your service and things along those lines, so.
Yeah, cause I'd like to see something come from the planning commission, I mean, supervisor's gonna do his thing, but I think we should also have something to give them.
I, I, I was thinking along the same lines, so I figured I'd send out an email, if anybody has any ideas of anything, but I was definitely thinking like a well wishes gift kinda thing, so.
Anything else?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Yeah, I was, yeah, that's why, I was like, public comment, um.
Hi, Melinda Hoffman, one six zero seven three Fish Lake Road, um, I was talking to someone who is also a township resident today. And we were wondering if there has ever been a trolley or shuttle system to take residents from Holly to Fenton and back and forth. And if there hasn't been, can there be, is there any type of a benefit? I personally would see that the exchange with the shopping, Holly has all the antique shops, I don't see that in Fenton, I see a different de- demographic. And I'm just wondering if there's any exploration into some type of a San Francisco type of trolley between the two towns.
What is the smart bus that the village have, do?
Medical.
No related, yeah.
Medical.
Senior disabled.
They did.
I know years and years, decades ago, there was the train, went between the two.
More than decades.
Stories about that, yeah.
I thought, I remember a couple of years ago, the village had something for like, you paid two dollars or something, and could get on a bus to Grand Blank and back.
I can tell you that since I've been here, that wasn't like, there wasn't a case.
They, they.
I know, I talked about the, the.
The seniors have had things like that.
Yeah, I was just saying, the seniors have had, um, Hollywoodland system and.
Money that we transfer over to the, uh, the transportation, uh, that will be transferred over to the village. And that's the smart bus that we're speaking of, that's what we do on a yearly basis, so I know there aren't, there are no other transportation things on the map because we felt that especially used, you know, you might talk to the village, because you might find, that might be an idea that even though you're a township resident.
Right.
People in the village, that might be an idea that, I mean, on that bus, I don't know how, how used that bus is, but that might be an idea, it's a smart.
And that's the smart bus?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, and that's maintained through the village.
Right.
Okay, perfect. But also a board, I would think that the board would trust, it would be the, would be another.
Explaining to her is that we have so much money, we, uh, transferred to the village concerning the transportation, because we felt, you know, wasn't enough demand, you know, not enough money that the township had to really mount that thing, so, or, you know, I guess we've done it several times. Transfer money to the, uh, village to use for the septic bus, so. But, you know, that, that would be something Katie used, would be, uh, that's the, uh, assistant village manager, that might be something that, you know, might be interested in, uh, take that.
Also, she's the DDA director too, so she would be, she would be a, a, a good resource for that, that type of idea. Perfect, thank you. Yep.
No? No?
No.
Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, hearing none, we will adjourn, that clock is not right. At seven fifty-two.
Thank you.
It's almost a record.
I know, that I can take, yeah, I think it is a record for.
It shouldn't be.
Yeah, I can tell too, so glad I have.
Yes, I said, well, no, I was gonna put all my stuff in, now I've got this thing, and this is less than years.
Yeah, yeah.